Good evening. My name is Anahita Fala, Hearing Officer for San Francisco Public Works. Clinton Oddwell is the clerk of this hearing. This hearing is being recorded via Zoom and will be available afterward through a link on the San Francisco Public Works website, sfpublicworks.org. As this is a virtual hearing, there is no sign-in sheet. So if you would like to receive information about the results of this hearing, please send an email to the email address listed on the hearing notice, which is urban forestry@sfdpw.org. If you would like to be on the contact list, please type and send your email address in the chat or send an email to urban forestry@sfdpw.org. This public hearing is being held to consider eight items regarding tree removals under Public Works jurisdiction. We intend to go through the items in the order posted on the website and being shared on the screen right now. My job as the Hearing Officer is to gather the facts for the hearing item, listen to your testimonies, and help our Director of Public Works make determinations. I will not be making any decisions today. Instead, I will forward the findings from this hearing and make my recommendations to the Director. The Director will make the final determinations. When the Director's determinations are made, the department will notify you of them if you have provided contact information. The hearing will proceed as follows for the eight cases. I will ask Public Works staff to speak first and present the case. Then I will allow the property owner or appellant or applicant to speak. Then any member of the public or witness who wants to speak. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. The clerk will monitor the time for all speakers and will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds left. If you are a party to this proceeding, I will call on you to speak. If you would like to use visual materials in your presentation, please let me know before you speak. You will then have the standard three minutes to provide your comments. If you are a member of the public or witness who wants to speak, wait for me to call for public comments, then use Zoom's Raise Your Hand feature if you're on a computer to put yourself in the queue to speak. If you are dialing in on your phone, dial *9 to indicate you're raising your hand. When it is your turn to speak, I will recognize you. If you're on your phone and you're muted, press *6 to unmute yourself. If you would like to use visual materials in your presentation, please let me know before you speak. You will then have the standard three minutes to provide your comments. Comments and questions should be addressed to me and not to the department or the applicant. If you cannot finish your comments within a lot of time, you may submit written testimony to me by the end of this hearing. If I feel that a question is warranted, I will ask the question. After all comments are completed, I will close the item. We will now begin the hearing. The first item is Order Number 203640252 Sanchez Street. This is to consider removal of one street tree with replacement. The staff approved the removal and the public has protested. May I have Public Works make its presentation?
Hi, this is Steve Keller with the Bureau of Urban Forestry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Again, I just would like to reiterate that if you were not a applicant or a protester, because we already have your contact info, you can send us your contact info to urban forestry@sfdpw.org and we'll make sure we'll get all of the resulting decisions issued to you. Again, the first case is the removal of one tree with replacement at 252 Sanchez Street. Here's a photo of the tree. It is an evergreen ash. In this particular case, the property owners have applied for a tree removal permit. The main reason the tree was approved for removal was that the tree is directly beneath high voltage PG&E power lines. And once or twice a year PG&E has to significantly top the tree and remove approximately 60 to 80% of the canopy on an annual basis. Here's an example of when the tree is in full growth. I tried to show that the red drawings, how close the tree gets to the high voltage power lines. And that is why PG&E has to come and maintain this tree annually, if not twice a year. Again, here's a picture that kind of shows the two extremes. On the left, you have the tree in full growth. Evergreen ash is a species that sprouts prolifically. And you really cannot control the growth without unfortunately, you do have to go through this constant cycle of topping, regrowth, and topping again. So the tree goes, it's constant flux of respouting into the roadway, respouting against the facades of the building. And then at the same time, when it is pruned, they remove, in this photo, it looks like approximately 80% of the canopy. So the property owners applied for the permit, they've agreed to remove the tree and replant a new tree and water and maintain that tree until it was established. That is all for Public Works.
Thank you, Steve. I'm now going to make it open for the comments from the public.
Go ahead and raise your hand. And then we have one hand, we have Michael.
Yeah, Michael is the applicant.
We'll go ahead and there, okay, Michael, you're on.
Mike Sajic, and I represent the homeowners at 252 Sanchez Street. I just want to reiterate that we really just want a more appropriate tree in that space. One that is conducive to the power lines and the building and the sidewalk. We've had the sidewalk replaced about four years ago. Due to, actually, there was an accident. Somebody tripped over the cracking of the sidewalk and we replaced the entire sidewalk. And that was about $5,000. And as you can see from, there's actually cracks forming already in the new sidewalk from the roots of the tree. So also of note, the next door neighbors of 246 Sanchez Street, the buildings were built at the same time. They had the same trees planted. They had their trees removed approximately 15 years ago and had those replaced. So we would just like to follow suit and remove this problematic tree to just something more city-friendly, more appropriate for the location. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have, we have Michael, or Michael just spoke, is that correct? Yes, Stephen just spoke. So I'm going to
You can call on Stephen Howard. He's the arborist representing the applicant.
Okay. Go ahead, Stephen, you're allowed to talk.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Yeah, Stephen Howard with Davy Tree. Yeah, all the points that have been made so far are great. I would just go as far to add that Michael had said that recently, through a public safety issue, they had raised the tree skirt up to about 11 feet over the sidewalk. And the way PG&E prunes it, you know, they bring the top way down. So, you know, you have to raise the bottom and bring down the top at the same time. You kind of just either end up with a pancake or, you know, almost pilarding really, which isn't an improved pruning method for ash trees. So that's all I'd add.
Okay, thank you. And then next, we have Josh. Go ahead and unmute Josh.
I think you can hear me.
Yes.
Great. I'll keep this real brief. One, these are questions I'm going to pose to the Hearing Officer, and if you would like to shoot these back to Public Works, obviously, that is within your discretion. Just some questions about, first of all, regarding raising up the canopy. My understanding, as a certified access specialist, is that that only needs to be 72 inches, not, I'm sorry, 80 inches and not 11 feet. So I'm just a little curious why that was done. I'm not sure that it matters, but and then finally, my other questions are whether the existing tree has been essentially financially assessed and how that compares to the new tree and whether there has been a determination on the species of the new tree so that we do not, first of all, end up in this place again, but also so that we are maximizing the environmental benefits that we need from our canopy. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any more hands. Stephen, do you have anything to add to what's been brought up?
Yeah, I can try to answer some of Josh's questions. The tree itself has not been, I guess, appraised in terms of its replacement value. I believe that's what he was asking. And in terms of the replacement species, we will work with I will give the applicant like a short list of species that I would approve for the site. Something that doesn't get as tall and near the high voltage lines, but something that does get relatively broad because it is a wide sidewalk. So something that can fit, you know, within the scope of the existing utility lines, but at the same time, fill the sidewalk and create as much canopy as possible. So I will be directing the applicant, giving them a small selection of species to choose from.
Okay.
Sorry, that is all. Yeah.
I don't see anybody else's hand up. Any other comments for 252 Sanchez? There's one, Stephen had already spoke, but that's up to all of the Hearing Officers to determine if you want to Stephen has something else to add?
If it's brief.
Okay. Okay, you're going, go ahead, Stephen.
Yeah, briefly, the 11 feet over the street and sidewalk was what SFPD had recommended for visibility of the surroundings for the public. And I think just generally, we've been probably leaning towards small leaf tristania as a replacement.
Okay.
Okay, so one last call for any other comments. Okay, I guess you're not seeing anything either, Clint, are you?
Nope, we are all clear. We can move to the next one.
Okay. Thank you all for presenting your cases. If there are no comments for this item, I will now close the item and will make my recommendations to the Director. So now we're going to the next item, which is 2 Pizarro Way. And this is to consider the removal of three street trees without replacement. And the staff approved the removal and the public has protested. So I will have Steve go ahead with the presentation, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Wait, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, again, yeah, 2 Pizarro Way. Remove of three trees without replacement. There's three trees, all of the same species. It's our Bujus Marina. It's a very common street tree planted in San Francisco. This is a photo of tree one. You can see significant decline in about half the canopy in a very large area of decay or canker going down the trunk. Again, this is a photo of the, some of the decline and decay in the trunk. And there's two trees on the westwood frontage, again, the same species, and they're both suffering from the same style of decline. Okay, so essentially, each tree is infected with a it's a fungus that we've known to attack the species of tree for about four years. It was just recently named. But essentially, the, once the trees are infected with this disease, they tend not, they don't recover. The trunks develop these massive cracks. The bark and the cambium desiccates and the tree is no longer able to provide nutrients and water to the upper canopies. So you see these canopies slowly, basically, they kind of die in pieces. And again, the trees never really declined. I mean, they never really improved. So due to the the condition of the canopies and the large cracks in the trees, we approved the trees for removal. And unfortunately, the sidewalk is about five feet wide, and that is why we are not allowing replacement of these three trees. Here in this photo, you can see how it's not even a full two flags of sidewalk. We require with behind the curb, we require seven and a half feet of sidewalk. That's for a three-foot tree basin and a four-foot path of travel. But again, these trees were approved for removal because their health is declining and it's only a matter of time before they're completely dead. That is all for the Bureau of Urban Forestry. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Now, we can have the member of the public or witness who wants to speak.
Okay, I have Josh. Josh, go ahead.
Thank you. Steve, thanks for that presentation. I recently attended virtually an Urban Forest Council meeting where Nick Crawford of your office talked about the budget for tree planting, which is effectively now in the age of COVID, nothing. And so I'm wondering if there has been any consideration or even in asking this property owner, whoever is responsible or was previously responsible for this tree about the assessment of in-lu fees, as those are effectively one of the few mechanisms that we have now to budget for planting trees anywhere in the city. And then the second question I had was, I can see that that sidewalk is not, as you said, it's not, you know, wide enough to hold both a basin and have the required width for public right-of-way. So I'm curious as to whether there's been any other consideration by the Bureau or by the department regarding reducing impermeable surfaces, or are we just going to fill that in with concrete? Has there been any discussion maybe with Fuff about putting in, you know, even like a foot-wide sidewalk garden or anything so that we're not just continuing to fill in what was once a permeable surface? Thank you.
Okay, and we now have Stephen. Go ahead.
Yeah, hi, Stephen Howard with Davy Tree. Just by coincidence, this is another one of my clients. We've done work.
I think we lost Stephen.
Yeah, okay, my, whoops, sorry, Stephen. I was trying to lower someone off his hand. Sorry.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me now?
You're with, you're with.
Yes.
Yeah, Stephen Howard with Davy Tree. Yeah, I was just saying that it's another one of my clients, and we've worked on those trees for maybe four or five years at least. The ones with the most severe canker affliction, we've been pruning mostly just to remove dead wood time after time. It just keeps increasing. So that disease is hard to control. We've treated it once with a phosphonate, but I think they've kind of given up on the trees. So, I mean, they do have some nice trees in the significant tree area closer to the house. There's a palm tree. You know, their garden's really nice. It does contribute to the aesthetic, but, you know, I feel like sidewalk space that small is pretty limited on options.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other hands raised? I don't think so. Anyone else?
Okay, one last call and nobody. So I will say if there are no more comments for this item, I will now close this item and make my recommendations to the Director. So now we're moving on to the third item, which is Order Number 203642. This is for 2720 Broderick Street. And this is to consider removal of four street trees with a replacement of one. The staff approved the removal and the public has protested. I will have Steve from Public Works, please make its presentation.
Sorry, I got to get to the right side. Okay, Steve Keller, Bureau of Urban Forestry, 2720 Broderick Street. This is a property where the property owner has applied for a permit to remove these trees. This is a photo of the four blackwood acacias that are approved for removal. Or the applicant applied for the permit and the Bureau of Urban Forestry approved them for removal. Unfortunately, due to spacing from other trees and spacing from utilities, we believe only one new tree will be able to be planted at the site. Here is a photo, this is from June 2014, showing kind of past management of these trees. All four blackwood acacias had been topped, and this is probably a by, you know, every three years, the property owner would likely maintain it something in some fashion like this. And this type of pruning kind of has led to the ultimate decline of these trees. Blackwood acacias do not like being topped. They're one of the species who respond to it the worst in terms of how much the trees rot. You'll have developed columns of decay inside the trunk and along the branches. And then when the trees are allowed to regrow, you'll have things like fallen branches, which is what is occurring now. You can see the old topping cuts, and then you have these small respouts that are poorly attached and they tend to fall into the public right-of-way. Here's a photo of tree number one showing signs of past branch failures. You can see the old, you can kind of see the old topping cuts and where the sprouts originated and the rot had begun. So you have these big, so the trees from across the street look like nice green trees, but ultimately, they have very poor structure and they have potential to drop branches because of the decay. Here's another photo of tree one, probably showing past sidewalk repair. Just like their branches rotting, their roots tend to rot quickly as well after sidewalk repairs. At the base of tree one, you have a fruiting body of a fungus, so the sign of decay likely on the internal heartwood. Again, another conch fruiting body. The same story with tree two. It had been topped in the past, and now you're prolific respouting. And again, as time goes on and the trees are allowed to grow, more branch failures will occur. And here's a photo of tree three. On the left, you have, at the main branch union, you could see a small cavity. So there's both rot coming down from the old topping cuts and internally at the main branch union and inside of the trunk. And again, at the base, you have a fungal conch. And we're also showing how you're unable to get this tree replanted because you cannot get three feet away from the water meter because it then pushes you, I believe, into the driveway of the property. And here's a photo of tree four. Same thing. You can see on the right side, the bark is coming off of the main branch. So the scaffold branches are rotting. The upward sprouts are poorly attached and will likely detach and fall off over time. And the main branch union has some poor structure as well. And again, tree four also is showing the fruiting bodies. And here you have a sewer line. You need to be able to plant five, it says you can't, this is a typo. It should say five feet. You have to be five feet away from a sewer line. So this is why this tree cannot be replaced. And additionally, there is a tree to the left out of the picture that is also quite close to. And because this, this site can only have a one, one tree replacement, we're going to man, we're going to say that it's going to have to be a tree with a large mature stature to give the site as much canopy as possible. That exact species is yet to be determined. That is all for Urban Forestry.
Thank you, Steve. And now, if anybody from the public would like to make a comment or the property owner who applied, if they're on the call.
Okay, we have Josh Clip again for the public. Go ahead, Josh.
Thanks. Okay, so just a quick note as a matter of public record that we're three items into the agenda, and we're already at a net loss of six trees in a city with the smallest canopy of any major city in the US and a in a state that's already lost 3 million acres of forest in the last two months. So just making that kind of record and note. Regarding replacement, again, to the Hearing Officer, if you wish to redirect these questions to the Bureau, if not, that is obviously up to you. I am curious whether any fines were assessed for those topping cuts, which led to the decline of those trees. I am also curious as to whether, again, any in-lu fees have been assessed. Because again, that is basically what the city is going to be relying on for any type of replanting in the near future. Also, if there was any consideration of creating permeable surfaces where trees cannot be replanted, I would say native plants that would absorb water away from our combined sewer system and create a carbon sink. And finally, if there's been any consideration of wood reuse, which is called for in our 2014 Urban Forest Plan, and especially since acacias are known for being generally decent wood, although given the consideration of those trees, the condition of those trees, I guess I'm not entirely sure it's possible, but I was just wondering if that had been considered. Thank you.
If Steve wants to respond to those questions briefly?
Yeah, sure. Steve Keller, Bureau of Urban Forestry. In this particular case, in-lu fees don't really apply due to the fact that their trees, the urban forestry wants to get out of the public right-of-way because they are hazardous and because they generally, we only charge in-lu fees when it's related to a construction project. We typically do not require in-lu fees just because trees cannot be replanted outside of the control of the property owner for a voluntary removal permit. And again, for this particular site landscaping, the increase in permeability or landscaping was not brought up in terms of offsetting the loss to the trees. And I don't think wood reuse would be possible on these trees because due to the, as Josh mentioned, they're not in good condition and the the fungus is likely inside the heartwood, and you would not have much reusable wood. Thank God, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll allow Julie to talk. Go ahead, Julie. Julie had her hand up. Go ahead, Julie.
Hi, Julie. Are you muted now?
I'm trying to unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Julie.
Okay. Good afternoon. As the owner of that property for over 30 years, I had either Davy or Bartlett trees or Alisette prune the trees. I was on a waitlist, and there was a local man who was a licensed tree trimmer that I employed in 2014 to trim the trees. To trim the trees. And to remove the dead uh, wood. And you saw a picture, I was as concerned as you were. To answer the question, I was fined seven thousand five hundred dollars for this. The tree trimmer that I employed had retired. And he was a single person and had I had one of the larger tree companies, they would have absorbed the fine. And probably wouldn't have trimmed them like he did. And I submitted all this information at the time of the hearing. The fee was cut in, in half. Um, and uh, because we appealed and we brought in a, a statement from, from him. So I, you know, obviously it keeps going back to that cut in two thousand fourteen. But once again, every year I've had Bartlett tree and when they last prune them about six months ago. They said that they were diseased. And it breaks my heart to have, if you approve the trees to be removed. To only be able to replace one because I love the, the foliage in front of the house. But um, I think they are a, a, a safety stand uh, uh, thing at now. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Julie.
All right.
Um, this is a question for Buff, um, since it's been brought up for the last few cases. And now hearing it in this case, I want to ask, um, have we considered like, um, maybe like a potted surface? Planting or tree in place of.
Yeah, I'll go, um, so in, in this particular case, um. When Buff talks about tree replacement, we usually mean like we want a tree planted below grade. Um, or at grade underneath the sidewalk, so that way it is able to take root and grow into a large mature tree. Um, and, and that's how we gauge our one, our, our replacements. Um, at, at any time, a property owner, if they want to go, um. Above that voluntarily, they can um, remove excess concrete and create larger landscape plots in the sidewalk. If, if that's something they would like to do. And they, they can also put above ground planters um, as well on the sidewalk. As long as they meet certain standards in terms of uh, path of travel that people can do potted plants as well. So there are ways to green up a frontage um, without uh, planting trees. Thanks.
Thank you. I guess one last call for this item before I close it. If there are no more comments for this item, I will now close the item and will make my recommendations to the director. And so now we move on to the fourth. Order number two zero three six four three forty two ten Ocean Avenue. This is to consider removal of three significant trees on private property. On the Ocean Avenue frontage with replacement on the Everglade frontage. Staff approved the removal and the public has protested. I will have Public Works make its presentation.
Okay, hi, Steve Keller, Bureau of Urban Forestry. Here's a, um. This, uh, this site is the, these trees are on private property. It's the Ocean Avenue frontage of a large shopping, a large shopping center, I believe. Um, it's between Ocean and Sloate. Um, the three trees are approved for removal are two large Monterey pine trees. And uh, and the left side is a small on New Zealand Christmas tree. Um, the, the, the reason the property owner applied for a tree removal permit is uh, they were. Uh, cited by the city for lack of ADA compliance in terms of how people with disabilities are able to access the site. So they worked with a, um. A consultant to develop a. A new ramp uh, to access the, the shopping center. And in this case, uh, required the removal of, of three trees. Um. Here is uh, the, the first Monterey pine tree uh, proposed for removal. Um, it has, uh, let me see here, that we believe it had the beginning signs of pitch pine kinker, which is a. A bacteria that um, affects the, uh, the tree's ability to photosynthesize and give nutrients to itself. So. We, like, once it starts showing signs, it begins to slow decline until the tree eventually dies. Um, and the, the tree's poor health combined with. Um, the proposed regrading and construction at the site, uh, it would not be feasible to, to keep the tree. Um, the, the same thing goes for uh, this other large Monterey pine tree. Let me see, yeah, the, this, this tree is located exactly where the, the new ramp is going to be installed. Um, and the. The damage caused to the roots by the grading and the construction of the ramp would force the removal of the tree. Here's a, a video, I'm not a video, here's a, a photo looking up through the tree. Showing that the canopy is a little bit more sparse and declining than how it appears from the roadside. Uh, and here's a, a photo of the, the, the base of the tree. Um, and then the third tree proposed, proposed removal is a small New Zealand Christmas tree. It's a currently has, is being suppressed by the, the larger pine to the east. Um, here is a overlay of the proposed ramp design. The, the ramp is essentially kind of cutting through the two large pine trees. Um, and making a left turn. And then going up into the parking lot. Can you guys see my cursor?
Yes.
You can't, okay, so this, from their plan showing, this is the, the middle tree, the, the largest of the, um. Uh, pine trees. And you can see here is the, as you walk down the sidewalk and then there would be a new ramp coming up here and going this way. So there would be significant grading, um. To, to, I believe to build this ramp and then the disturbance of the roots, it would not be feasible to keep the tree. And then the, the same thing goes for the, the, the other trees over here and. The impacts to the roots would cause the, the, the tree to ultimately decline in health and possibly become destabilized. Um, here, I'm trying to show what I, how I interpreted the, the design of this ramp. Um, the yellow lines kind of indicating how it would go. Um. I'm trying, so trying to show the best photo of here, again, this is kind of showing how the, the ramp is currently. This is, the, the ramp would. Be in the forefront of this picture and you could see how the soil is raised, so there would be significant impacts to the, to the tree's root system when this ramp would be built. Um, and in terms of uh, replacement. I believe we stated that replacement would not be possible a, at this site. Um, after it is constructed and that replacement would be on the Everglade frontage. Um. I, I think based, looking at this plan today, I, I think we'll withhold judgment on replacement at the exact location. Just given that I think there will be room for landscaping directly adjacent to this site. So I would, I would like to see how it's constructed after the fact to, to really. See if, if trees can or cannot be replaced at this exact site. Um, and I believe there is another issue with this property that they had a tree removal permit several years ago. Um, and they did not um, replace trees. And then we, we have informed them of that, that we are requiring them on, on this, you know, as a condition of this permit. That they're also going to need to replace the trees that they still owe us. That is all for urban forestry, thanks.
Thank you, Steve. And now for any public comments or the property owner.
Okay, well CJ, go ahead. Lower your hand.
Hi, I'm Cindy Johnson, you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I work for Donahue Schreiber, we are the property owners of Lake Shore, Lake Shore Plaza. Um, just to put some of this into context, first of all, we only recently purchased a center. So um, as we purchased it, as we were going through due diligence, that's when we found out. Um, about the ADA requirements, the citation, we, we don't cause that problem, we're just fixing it. Uh, as part of the agreement, we, you know, we agreed to do all of those improvements. It's a much larger product in this, it's throughout the center, it's about a half a million dollars worth improvements. Uh, and this is the, the last piece of the approved permit um, from the city. So um. And then separate from that, just before I forget, those trees that were mentioned at the end that the owner did not replace. Uh, again, that wasn't us, but we're more than happy to replace them and actually they've already been approved and should be happening in the next couple of weeks. Um, then the other thing I wanted to make clear, you know, we're, we're constrained in this area. I mean, the design came out of being constrained by the existing ramp coming down from Lucky's. The large sound wall that has a giant footing, it sounds like a, a building. The existing, we had to tie into an existing compliant place on the city sidewalk. And we can't modify the driveway because that's where all the deliveries come in and we certainly can't send people out into the driveway. Um, so this design really has a lot of constraints and, and that's, you know, didn't choose to remove the trees. We're, we're being forced to do this and, and, uh, you know, we're happy to, it also benefits ADA compliance, so. Um, as far as replacement, I just would want to be clear that we're gonna try to do the replacements on Everglade. But I'd also with Susan uh, that we may have to do the in lieu fee instead. Because we don't fully control that section, Lucky's control section of the shopping center. Um, part and they have approval rights and there's also utilities back there. So I just want to make sure everyone clear, we may choose to do the in lieu fee instead.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll allow Josh to speak now.
Thank you, um. I, 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 I just, I heard Cindy's last comment about not sure about the replacements or um, in lieu, so I'm not sure that my question is really gonna. Matter, but I'll ask it anyway, in terms of replacement species, because those, at least two of those are fairly large statured trees and a one for one, say. Um, if you were going to replace a Monterey pine with an olive tree, that's a pretty dramatic environmental net loss. And especially in an area where you're, you're looking at. Um, pedestrians and specifically creating um. An attractive right of way for persons with disabilities. And then also because this is right next to a parking lot. Um, and we know that uh, from an environmental science perspective, parking lots create urban heat island impacts. But when you have tree shade, um, that is reduced. So I, I guess my question really was about replacement and I'm not sure that there's an answer to that. Uh, because it sounds like that is still up in the air, which, I mean, given how much paperwork I, I, I believe has already gone into this. It's a little bit hard to understand why, why we haven't quite figured that out. The, the infrastructures are not moving around here, we, we know what the plan is, so I'm, I'm not clear why. When the order says with replacement, that still seems to be an open question. Thank you.
I just want to ask if there's no public comments. That, um. I think, is there a public comment?
Cindy still has, uh, Cindy wants, uh, do you, Cindy, do you need to add something to, uh? Go ahead, you had a minute left, so.
Okay, thank you, I, I just forgot to add, um, you had made a comment about, you know, waiting till the construction's done. See if we can, I think, fit a tree there. Uh, we're more than happy to look at that, our arborist decided that there was too much tree canopy on the next tree over. Um, to make any of that size feasible, but, um, but again, more than happy to either do the in lieu fee or an extra tree. Uh, on the right side of the construction part.
Thanks Cindy, I just want to ask, you mentioned, um. That when they were designing this ramp, they did try to use the existing non-compliance ramp connecting the sidewalk. But it was not possible to meet the ADA requirements, correct?
Well, we're, we're feeding in from the existing ramp, but, but yes, when we, there's much of a drop off to go straight. You have to do some sort of sideways ramp.
Okay.
Complying, because of the grades and everything else, yeah.
Okay, just want to clarify, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, one last call for public comments or if it Public Works wants to add anything?
I'll just chime in real quick, um. There's, we all know, like, in the city, there is a finite amount of planting space, whether in the public right of way or adjacent to the pu- public right of way. And in every case, we'd much rather have trees planted than, than taking Lufy's. Um, because our ultimate goal is to plant as many trees as possible, so there, there's lots of, um, room to plant. Trees on the, the back, on the. On the backside of the right of way, um, or on private property on the, the back of the sidewalk. So I think we'll definitely be able to find places to plant new trees um, near this site or if not near the site on a different frontage of the property. Thanks.
Thank you. If there are no more comments for this item, I will now close the item and will make my recommendations to the director. So, um, moving on to the next item, which is the fifth item on our agenda. It is order number two zero three six four four twenty seven fifty nineteenth street. And this is to consider the removal of two street trees with replacement. Uh, the staff approved it and the public has protested. Um, will Public Works please make its presentation? Steve, I think you're muted if you start speaking.
Okay, thank you, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, twenty seven fifty nineteen street. Um, the, the, uh, the property owner applied to remove two New Zealand Christmas trees. Um, this is a construction project where they are going to be adding, I believe it's six additional stories to an existing parcel. Um, uh, the, the two trees in the photo are the two trees that they've applied for removal and, and Urban Forestry did approve them. Um, and the property owner has also agreed to plant two forty eight inch box trees. Um, as a replacement species, which are typically, you know. Pretty, pretty sizable trees, maybe about fifty percent, the twenty five to fifty percent of the volume of the existing trees. Um, here's a, a photo or an aerial photo, um. I've circled the two trees in blue. Um, this is the only site on the property where they will have access into the property for, um. Bringing in trucks for demolition, excavators and to set up their cranes. Uh, the reason being that that site of the two trees is the only construction access is that, um. Another city department has told them that they must, um, keep the existing brick facade in place and preserve it during construction. Um, in this photo, that is the area highlighted in yellow, so that is going to be in place during the entire. Um, for all of construction and the, the red lines are meant to show, you know, a new buildings being built on top of this. And additionally, you have high voltage power lines bounded on, on both sides. So you can't really use cranes over the power lines, they, they have to get a crane into the property. Um, and showing in blue. And showing in blue, that's the, that's where the, the two trees proposed rules are. Here's a, this is, there's some documents provided by the development showing the brick facade that needs to be retained. And the, the two trees that are proposed for removal and you also are bounded by power lines. So this property just has a lot of constraints and these two trees kind of, if they were to remain, pose a major issue with constructability. Here's another diagram provided by the applicant showing they're going to get flatbed trucks in to deliver construction materials to take out debris. And then also they have to enter this site to erect the crane. And again, the, the yellow circle, that's the swing radius of an excavator. I suppose during demolition, they'll need to load trucks up and those trucks will need to exit the site. So the, the trees are approved for removal because it, it seemed pretty feasible or infeasible for construction to occur if the trees would remain. And if they even tried to protect them during construction, it would be really, really hard. And I also give the development credit for not applying to remove all the trees on the entire frontage, which is something many developments do do. So they actively are going to protect those trees in place as well. Thanks. That is all.
Thank you. Now for public comment or if the property owner wants to talk?
Looking for any hands raised? Anyone want to speak about? 27, we were on 2750 19th Street.
Yes.
Any hands?
I do see, I mean, I see some names on here that I know that I think, I want to say Albert Cruz is on this project. Oh yeah, there you go.
Yep. And there's Albert. We'll go ahead. Albert, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we're the landscape architects and I thought, and I had the arborist is trying to get on, but he couldn't get on. But we, you know, we're going to replace 48, two 48 inch box trees per view of recommendations. We, right now, we're proposing a gonos flexosa. And that's where, and I think it's pretty well stated that that's the only place we can get on to the site or construction logistics. Since we're preserving the brick facade and we're going through other means to protect all the other five on, five trees that are on nine, Brian, we always confuse it to on Brian and two on 19th. So, so I have, I'm not sure. I think there could have been somebody else out there, the owner, but I'm not sure if he's here. That's all I have.
Thank you. I see Josh's hand is raised.
Thank you. One, one comment, I really don't want to give credit to any developer for not asking to remove every single tree on a site. I just, that is just really an incredibly low bar. And unfortunately, because of our city's pretty thin street tree protection, it's often cheaper for a developer to just remove a tree than try to save it. And I, I just really don't think that's anything we should be proud of not happening here. But what I wanted to ask was whether, I understand that Steve mentioned the, another city agency requiring the brick facade being maintained. And I had certainly as somebody who's lived in San Francisco for 23, 24 years now, I've, I've seen that quite a bit in construction. But I'm wondering if there was any consideration made for, or even whether it was asked whether the facade could be temporarily removed and replaced. This is something that is similar to being done over at 1001 Petrero for their historic brick fence. Because what it, what it sounds like here is that we're literally prioritizing bricks over trees. And so I'm wondering if we have explored every possible option to killing what appear to be two healthy trees that are a public resource and that thousands of dollars of, of public tax dollars have gone into maintaining to ensure that they, they are healthy. And we've seen a lot of really unhealthy trees. So I'm wondering if we have really gone to the mat here and looked at every alternative to removal before just deciding, well, you know, we've got to save these bricks. That's all.
All right. Thank you.
Um, just a reminder to everyone, if you've called in, you can press star six to raise your hands. And star nine, I'm sorry, it's star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself. And while we wait, I want to ask if, I know that it sounds like the plans show a construction setup zone in that area where those trees are and that the, they have to remove that, it sounded like to be able to work. Has there been, is the project planned approved by the city for that to be the designated zone for working and, you know, mobilization in and out the site? And that could be a question answered maybe by.
Yeah, there's two hand raised and I believe they're part of the applicant group.
Sure. Okay.
So I'm going to allow Sean to go ahead. You're first and then Eric, you'll be next.
Hi, Sean.
Go ahead, Sean.
Sean's muted. There you go.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead, Sean. We can hear you. You should be able to. You're unmuted.
Sean, I think you're on a computer. So hopefully in the bottom left corner, you can see that you're unmuted.
So I'm going to go ahead and just let Sean work on some of the technical aspects maybe and go ahead and go to Eric. And if Sean, you can raise your hand again if you can get your audio working.
Hi, Eric.
Yeah, can you hear me? Sorry, I'm on an iPad. Okay, hi. Yeah, this is Eric Norden with Align Real Estate. We're representing the developer. I guess to answer the question about the brick facade being removed and then replaced. It's, the building was built in about 1902 and the brick is pretty fragile at this point. Part of the approval process was to, you know, obviously to keep that facade. You know, part of the construction process is to retain and brace that facade during construction so that it doesn't crumble and fall down. You know, moving it or taking it away and putting it back would be pretty detrimental to that, to that old brick. So I don't, I don't think that part is feasible. As far as the city approving a logistics plan regarding, you know, where trucks can go and crane logistics, I don't think there's, that's more of a means and methods for the contractor. But I will add to that part of the project includes off-site parking down below. We're going one level down. And that area where we're including the logistics plan is also going to be the final ramp down into the garage to park cars. So that, that is also another consideration for that section being impacted. You know, it's like everyone's kind of already said, that's the only area that doesn't have the brick. It's, it's the wood facade that we're removing. Also happy to answer any other questions related to that. Yep.
Thanks, Derek. I just want to reiterate, you said that the final ramp for the project is where those two trees are, correct?
Right. So it's because of, again, because of the facade being brick and being retained as part of the project, the only area to have, have the ramp to the lower level was in that area as well. So that's another piece of the puzzle there.
Thank you.
Yep.
I know Sean earlier had his hand raised. I'm not sure if.
Just let Sean know if he wants to type his question. We'll read it for him. You're not on mute, Sean. You have four if you'd like it. Well, I'll go ahead and again, Sean, if you.
Oh, he said Eric.
Okay, good. We'll go ahead and move on to the next door today.
Before I close it, I think one question I have for Buff is, were those trees assessed? I kind of missed that.
No, um, because the, the project is doing a one for one replacement. And they're doing a larger, like they're voluntarily doing a larger, typically for construction require a 24 inch box tree. This is, and they're voluntarily doing a 48 inch box replacement. So and then additionally, because it is construction, they're going to naturally trigger what's called tree and lufies where based on their frontage calculation. Let's say, just pretend it's 100 feet. That would mean they have to have five trees. So well, ultimately they're going to owe some of the lufies because they're not going to be able to plant all of the trees required of the project based on their frontage calculation. So that was kind of off track. Um, but anyways, no, the individual trees were not assessed based on replacement value. We're, we're just having them replace them in roughly the same location. And then the driveway, though, I believe it'll be on either side of the driveway.
Thank you. If there are no more comments on this item, we will now close this item and I will make it my recommendations to the director. So now we're on the sixth item, which is order number 203645. And this is for 3550 Caesar Chavez Street. This is to consider removal of two significant trees on private property with replacement. Staff has approved the removal and the public has protested. I will now allow Public Works to make its presentation.
Okay, Steve Keller, Bureau of Urban Forestry. Bear with me as I describe what this, the details of this permit. The trees that were approved for removal are located at 3550 Caesar Chavez. It's the large Salvation Army property. However, the applicant for the tree removal permit is the new development at 3620 Caesar Chavez. There, you can see on the top photo, I tried to draw a yellow power line. There was an existing PG pole support guy wire there. However, new high voltage electric line was brought over from 26th Street across the Salvation Army loading area. And a new high voltage pole was constructed on private property between two of the eucalyptus trees. And the, the sole purpose of bringing over that high voltage electric was then to underground electric and send it through this, under the sidewalk to 3620 Caesar Chavez. So two, again, two eucalyptus trees on private property at 3550 Caesar Chavez. And then under agreement between the, the two property owners, the true permit was submitted. Um, here on, on the right, you kind of have the existing conditions of the two eucalyptus trees proposed for removal. And you can kind of see the existing power pole between the two trees. And then on the left, you have kind of post-construction. The, a larger taller pole was installed. And I believe the applicant at 36 of, the development at 3620 Caesar Chavez brought in their own arborist to do pruning to facilitate the, the installation of the new pole. Here's a photo from, this is a photo from inside the, the parking lot of Salvation Army. And the, the reasons the, the tree removal permit was approved was that the applicant was told by PG&E that PG, PG would not approve the new construction and undergrounding of the electric lines unless the, the eucalyptus trees were ultimately approved for removal. And the Bureau of Urban Forestry approved the, the trees for removal due to the type of species they are. And again, PG&E, the, let me go back a little bit. The reasons PG&E does not want the trees there is twofold. One, they likely don't want to pay for the annual maintenance to clear the trees from the high voltage lines. And it's also just not a good species to have near, near power lines. As once you top them and get them away from power lines, they tend to resprout prolifically. So it'll likely become a fairly annual event to prune the trees from beneath the power lines. And the Bureau of Urban Forestry approved the trees for removal mainly based on the structure and the species they are. Both of the eucalyptus trees don't have very good branching structure and being a species that is prone to branch failure and having poor structure, they're, they're more likely than to fail into the right of way. And additionally, the, with the annual maintenance needed to get the trees out of the power lines, it's likely they're not going to have much canopy either way. And we've, and the urban forest, we thought it was a better long-term goal to have the applicant remove these two trees now and plant more trees on the block. That would be a better long-term solution. In terms of replacement, we're going to have the applicant 3620 Caesar Chavez, they're going to have to cut one new tree basin near the trees. So this is a good, let me say one more thing. This is a good photo showing that the two trees on the right are the ones approved for removal. The eucalyptus on the far left, that tree is remaining. So there will be some canopy left at this site. And for replacement, we're having them plant one new tree, create a new tree site here at the curb. And then we are going to have the applicant plant on two additional empty tree basins on the, on the block. One is in front of 3550 Caesar Chavez. Another one is at the opposite end of the block at 3636 Caesar Chavez. And the applicant will be responsible to plant these trees, water them weekly and make sure that they, make sure they become established, healthy, thriving trees. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have Melanie Stein with her hand raised.
Go ahead, Melanie.
Hi, everyone. My name is Melanie Stein and I'm the applicant for the removal of the trees at 3550 Caesar Chavez Street. Thank you for taking the time to review our case. We are here to propose the removal of two trees on private property located at 3550 Caesar Chavez Street. As you saw in the photos that Steve showed us, these trees surround a PG&E electric post. And unfortunately, the two trees are too close to energized PG&E poles in their current location and they are currently a safety hazard. This electric post runs along private property where San Jose Street used to run, which is why there are still active PG&E posts and lines in private property. We had this site reviewed by a PG&E vegetation expert and many PG&E representatives of various ranks, a few arborists and a handful of members of the inspection department. All parties are in agreement that these two trees are too close to an energized PG&E pole and causes safety hazard to society. Given the current state of affairs, it doesn't seem right to question the authorities who say something is a fire hazard. Our main concern is to make sure we take care of San Francisco and the city we are all proud to be citizens of. Before you stop and say developers are taking down our trees, please take into account, we are adding 24 units to our dire housing crisis, dire housing crisis. Dire housing crisis and there were zero housing units in the existing lot. We will be replanting two trees as Stephen pointed out. We do not have the intention of de beautifying San Francisco. We just want everyone to remain safe and to keep our density out of harm. Stephen also didn't mention, but we have paid other in lieu fees for other aspects of this project. Only adding more trees to San Francisco's tree line streets. These two trees are located in a dangerous location and we look forward to planting new, healthy, beautiful trees in a safe location. Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to call on the person with the phone number ending in 929. Go ahead. Yep, go ahead. You're on.
Hello, how are you? My name is Dominic Tringali. And I just wanted to call in because we need to connect this issue with the bigger picture. Yes, the environment is very important, which is why the developers are required to replant new trees. We keep touting the housing supply issue in San Francisco and yet want to create an issue around two trees being taken down. That stand in the way of having an inhabitable building. And it doesn't really make sense. So I think the trees need to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we're going to have the person with the phone number ending in 385. Go ahead.
Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Sorry, my actual cell phone was muted as well. My apologies. My name is Samantha Stern. I am a resident of San Francisco. I'm attending this to speak in favor of removing these two trees on private property. Though these trees are old and established, they are very sad looking and a safety hazard to San Francisco as a whole. We are not in the position to question PG and E and their safety measures to prevent fires today in 2020. And I, the trees will be replaced. So I say go ahead and approve the removal of these trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we have next someone with the phone number ending in 262. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Frank Lavine. I am a San Francisco resident. And. I I think we should approve the trees to be taken down. My big thing is all the wildfires in the news. I think leaving these two trees up so close to this electrical pole that is powered up. Would just be negligent on on everyone involved. This is a situation where the public and the city are informed. Does the tree stand now so close to this electrical pole? It does pose a big, big danger. Something were to happen and a fire broke out. The blame would ultimately have to fall on the city and. Cause potentially irreversible effects on on the neighborhood, the buildings and the people involved. So. I myself think the trees need to go.
Okay, thank you. And now we have it is John Nolte. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I okay. First off, I didn't hear anything in the presentation about. A second site for the pole, the poles already been put in without additional looking at the. Facility where the pole could be without hitting any trees. So I didn't see any mitigation there going in with the trees not. Where the trees are being put where the trees are versus putting in some other location on the property. It didn't have to do with the cutting of mature trees. Secondly, I didn't hear about what type of trees are going to be put in. And thoroughly, I did not hear of anything about the issues of surrounding the. What the. They say they were going to do in Lou fees and so forth, but they didn't say the the exact amount of trees and what size of trees. Because that's already mandated by I mean, department to put in trees. So I don't hear really anything extra being given to the plate for taking out these mature trees. Thank you.
I thank you. And then we have another. Someone calling in by phone with the last three digits of the phone number in 904. Go ahead. Go ahead, caller.
Hi, yeah, my name is David Beam. I just wanted to say that. We already have people living in this building, so it seems like it's a question of either asking people to leave the building.
Oh, I think we lost them. Maybe that was the phone number ending in 904. Maybe we can. Oh, here they are. Hi, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Sorry about that. You can start.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, sorry. It said I was muted in the middle. But yeah, I'll start over. My name is David Beam. I just want to say we already have. People living in the building. So it's a question of either like asking people to leave their homes. Subjecting them and their neighbors to a fire hazard in the entire city. Or removing two trees that, you know, have already been spotted for replacement. They've already been said to be structurally. Compromised. So I don't really think it's that big of a debate between considering people's homes and safety. And two trees that we can replace. And that's it. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
It looks like we have Josh Clip.
Yes, go ahead, Josh.
Thank you. Um, I'm I have to confess, I'm super confused. I thought what Steve said was that. The trees were there and then the post went in. And assuming that's the case, I don't understand why it's. Being characterized as trees surrounding a post. It seems to me that the post was put in there, was put in between the trees. And additionally, the trees themselves are not a hazard. The pole that was put in there created the hazard. So I didn't hear anything in Steve's presentation saying that there was anything wrong with these trees prior to the pole installation. It sounds like PG and he came in, put in the pole. Now the trees are in this condition. And so basically. Basically, without a removal permit, PG and he took an action based on the assumption that at some point they would get one. I'm not aware that that's how the removal process works. Regarding tree species respectfully, I know we we I understand certain species have various issues, but we don't. Approve removals based on what might or might not happen in the future or the cost of possible maintenance. And if that were the case, then there are a lot more trees in the city to remove because a significant promotion. Portion of San Francisco's canopy is eucalyptus. And then finally, I would just encourage everybody on this call to go ahead and just walk around that area for a little while. And just take note of how many dead trees there are, how many trees there are that are falling over, how many empty basins there are. And also notably that the construction at St. Luke's, the St. Luke's site right across the street took out every single tree along that public right of way. So this is just a tremendous loss of canopy in a very small area. And it is really disheartening to know that one agency effectively stuck a pole in there, forcing the issue. And I'm as a citizen, wondering if that's how this works, that one agency takes an action, which then forces another agency to take another action and give it a permit. Thank you.
I don't see any answers. So I think there were some questions, maybe Steve, if you want to address some of the questions that came like from John Nolte or Josh right now.
Well, we also have someone with the phone number in.
Okay, before then we'll let them go. Or I will let, yeah, hi.
Hi, my name is Jessica and I'm a resident of San Francisco and I support the removal of these two trees. As the trees stand now, it's impossible to keep them clear and away from the electrical pole in a safe manner. We're at a point where we need to think particularly practically, not just emotionally about the situation. If I were living in this building, I would also feel safer not having this as a potential hazard looming looming over my head, especially what's happening. Currently in the North Bay. This isn't a question about the environment, but rather a matter of public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Uh, yeah, Steve, sorry, you can respond if you want to those questions, I think that I mentioned.
Yeah, I think um, prior so. Prior to the development contacting the Bureau of Urban Forestry, I think they exhausted a lot of the. The possible ways of getting. The amount of electricity they needed. To to the building. And ultimately, I think it came down to, I mean, it probably came down to cost in terms of what the developed like the. Ultimately, the reasons for the the different avenues of how they can get high voltage electric to the site. And it probably came down to cost for the development. And I think because it was on private property, PG and he already had rights to put a power pole in that site because. It's hard to, but high voltage power used to go across Caesar Chavez to the old hospital and through the hospital. And I don't know exactly when, but it got it got taken down at some point in time. So I think PG and he had existing rights. To install power at that site. Before this recent event happened, there wasn't existing PG guy wire there that was. It was just a support pole, but a PG structure existed there. And prior to prior to the PG pole being installed, Urban Forestry met with the applicant. And and we looked at the trees and we we gave them the go ahead to. You know, prune the trees and in order to whatever they we give them permission to prune the trees in order for PG to. Install the pole. You know, it's not just like the trees don't, you know, the trees don't have to be removed in terms of the Bureau of Urban Forestry's opinion. We just think they they should be removed. Prior to the pole being installed, the trees did have poor structure and were poorly maintained and. Eventually, if the if the property owner did not maintain them, well, they would eventually have failures into the right of way. And at this juncture, we think it's time to have them removed. Thanks.
Thank you. I thought there was a raise hand, but I guess not. Or yes, there is still.
Yeah, phone number just pops up.
Yeah, it's ending in seven, four, three. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Liz and I'm a San Francisco resident. I feel when these trees were planted, they were in a good location, but as our surroundings change, we should also adapt. The electrical pole is already powered up. The building already has residents. I don't think we should leave the trees that they are to potentially cause an electrical fire, especially what we're currently seeing in the world. They're also on private property, so it doesn't seem necessary to discuss this any further for myself. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I am.
We're good.
Okay, so if there are no more comments for this item, I will now close the item and make my recommendations to the director. So now we're on the seventh case for tonight, and that is order number 203646. And this is for 1064 Mission Street adjacent. And this is to consider removal of four street trees adjacent to 1064 Mission Street. Removal of three olive trees on Stevenson frontage, likely without replacement. And removal of one tree on Mission Street with a replacement. Staff denied the removal and the applicant has appealed. May let's have Public Works, please make its presentation.
Okay. Okay, Steve Keller, Bureau of Urban Forestry. Like it says, the. The project is a very, it's a large development. I believe it's 100% affordable housing. There are at the site, there are three trees on mission. They're applying to remove one of them. The. Let me start again. So this project is under construction and typically. All tree removal. Permits should be dealt with prior to a project beginning construction because the public needs to know. The public needs to know what is, you know, what's ultimately going to happen to the trees because of a project. So when this property initially went through planning and the building permit process, they did not. They did bring up tree removal to us and it was only about the trees on Stevenson. And we denied that permit because they did not. Give us a good reason as to why the trees need to be removed. More recently. And then and then we, you know, after they did not appeal our denial, they. They the the building permit got released and they began construction. Now we're at the point, construction has began and they've come to us to apply for tree removal and we have denied their permit. Because we denied it in the in the past and we want them to work around the trees. On the first tree that they applied for removal was one tree on Mission Street. It was a it is or it was a nice Brisbane box tree. They're saying they need to remove it because they have to get. Crane access into the site. And as of today, they they did illegally remove the tree. They said they were going to do it and. We told them they're they can't, but they did it anyway. So we're going to assess. A large fine and. Get them to replace the tree and replace as many as possible, but just so everyone understands that they they did illegally remove a tree recently, I believe, in the last two weeks. So moving on from that tree.
Do you have any slides for us to show? Because we're not seeing your screen right now.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Josh. Yeah.
Do to do. Okay. Okay, I guess my so anyways, can you see that now?
Yes, thank you, Steve.
Yeah, no, thanks, guys. I appreciate it. Um, anyways, this was a photo of the tree that Urban Forest recently denied. We want to preserve it preserve it because obviously it's a very nice Brisbane box tree with with large canopy. The development. Said that they needed to get crane access into the site and they couldn't do it with the tree standing for. Various other construction logistics, but. We wanted them to to go through this process and we denied it, but they went ahead and removed the tree anyways. So it's kind of a. It's kind of moot at this point. Moving on, and this is a so. Here is a, this is provided by the the development. I believe this is a crane construction. Schematic showing how they were planning on getting a. Two cranes onto the site. Now that we're talking about Stevenson Street. They. They in order to set up the crane on the left, they need to put a crane in the street to set up the other crane. Here's a photo of the existing trees. On Stevenson on there's three. Believe there are three olive trees. They're not really in in great condition, but we originally thought that the trees could not be. Replaced. So that's ultimately why we denied them the first time around. And they're still denied at the moment. They're saying they need to remove the trees for to erect scaffolding. We see properties, you know, work around trees. Um, with scaffolding erection quite quite normally. It's not uncommon. It's not impossible. And here's a photo of one of the other olive trees. It's the only trees on the block. And here's another photo of tree number five, the third olive tree at the site. And again, they're the reason they have applied for removal is construction logistics and they don't think they can work around them. So I'll let the applicant speak to that. As of today, we. We do think it if the trees are removed, we do think it may be possible for them to replant. It's, if I zoom in, does that zoom in?
Yes, we're seeing it zoomed in.
Okay, so it's hard to tell, but the, the large black squares are pillars and they're inside the property line and just in front of that is the property line. So they're actually going to be building some sidewalk into their property, which could increase the sidewalk width just enough to meet minimal standards for planting new trees. So that's just something to point out that if these three olive trees are approved for removal, we do think that replacement would be possible. So again, just to summarize this, at the moment, this case is primarily about the trees on Stevenson Street, considering the fact that the project has already illegally removed one tree. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you. And now if the applicant or member of the public would like to speak. Oh, yes. Erin, looks like she has her raised hand.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, thank you. My name's Erin Carson and I, I am the Director of Construction Services with the Mayor's Office of Housing and Community Development. And so I just wanted to, first of all, thank the, the hearing officer and the Urban Forestry staff for helping the project team look at this problem or look at these, the project and the challenges and see if we can come up with some solutions. And I also wanted to just introduce a bit about this project. This is 256 units of permanent supportive housing. It's the largest permanent supportive housing project that the city has ever undertaken. It is intended to help meet Mayor Breed's goal of 1,500 units for formerly chronically homeless people within the next few years. This property will also, in addition to those 256 studios, 100 of which will be reserved for seniors, it will also have a 30,000 square foot health clinic and as well as a 5,000 square foot chef's space, which is a job training facility for the residents. So this is just an extraordinary project that the city is really proud to be able to help facilitate. And we're hoping that we can continue this project. We are, you know, it is unfortunate that that tree was removed and we take the Bureau of Urban Forestry process very seriously, as does our, our sponsors and our contractors generally. And others can sort of clarify later what happened and why this came about. So again, I thank you and I'll let the rest of the team speak now. Thanks.
Thank you. Oh, it looks like we have Albert who's raised his hand. Hi, Albert.
Hi there. My name is Albert Cruz, Mac Miller Company Landscape Architects. I'm here to speak about the three olives that are remaining on site on Stevenson. So when we look at them, they have a pretty bad structural, well, there's actually two now. One of them towards, near the courthouse is dead. The one, it's still there, but it's, it's, it's pretty dry. But the two to the north of it have a pretty bad structural lean. And the olives were fine when it was a parking lot because they had the broad canopy and they were able to work in that sort of space. And like Stephen said, we do have room to replace the three olives. And, you know, we were looking for a more columnar variety that would fit in that space better and not kind of crowd or touch, get into the way of the building. And that's what we, we are proposing and that's what we have on our plans right now to either replace with a, sorry, I have to, either a France Fontaine hornbeam or a Armstrong red maple. It would be, take the, that, they would work better in the condition that we have now. Like I said, things change and they work as a parking, the olives work as a parking lot tree, but not, not, not as being, being right next door to a large building. And, and, and they do have a structural lean. They, they're aiming right, they're leaning right into the property and there's no way to correct that anymore. And if we were to prune it, it's just going to stress the tree out even more where it is. So we're taking, we're taking action to replace the trees with, with a more suitable street tree. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, Brian Keller.
Yeah. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
This is Brian Kechter. I'm with Cahill, the contractor on the project. I think as Albert and Erin have discussed, we ran into some issues in our logistics planning and we weren't able to get it, this Mission Street tree on the, on the southern frontage of the property into the initial permit process. Through other discussions with other city agencies, our, our original plans were for all intents and purposes denied. So we had to bring in cranes through this section of the building so the, the project can be constructed. If we did not remove that tree in that timely fashion, it would have delayed the construction of the building and had huge schedule impacts and cost impacts in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Okay, um, this is Steve with Urban Forestry. Can, can you speak more to why the, the trees on Stevenson cannot be worked around? Like what, what are the construction interferences with those trees?
Sure, yes. Getting the, the project built on that side, there's construction of the, the main level. There's two levels of, there's a slab on grade and there's two levels of concrete going above that. And as we erect that, the scaffolding and the, the concrete there and all of the finished surfaces will be impacted by these, these trees. Safe, for the safe erection of it.
So that was my only question.
Okay.
Okay, we have Shannon.
Oh, hi Sharon.
Hi, my name is Sharon Kristen. I work with Mercy Housing California. We are the co-developer of this property with Episcopal Community Services of San Francisco. Liz Pocock from Episcopal Community Services is here on the call also. This property, as Erin mentioned, is 256 units of permanent supportive housing. And what that means is it's housing for people who will be exiting chronic homelessness. All the current, all the residents are currently experiencing homelessness and this building will provide an exit, a permanent exit of home, for homelessness for them. Mercy and ECS were selected as a developer back in February 2018 and we were given the mandate or the challenge to try to place this building in service by November 2021, which is approximately three and a half years, very quick turnaround time. MOHCD accepted this property from the Federal Department of Health and Human Services for the cost of $1, but the mandate was that they, that building had to be placed in service by November 2021. And as Erin mentioned, it's a very significant scope of work that we're looking at, a very large building of 256 units. The clinic that Erin referred to is going to be a city-operated Department of Public Health clinic. The Tom Waddell Urban Health Clinic is going to be relocated to this site and be located on Stevenson, as well as the San Francisco Homelessness and Supportive Housing, San Francisco's homeless outreach team will be on the second floor of the clinic. And then as Erin mentioned, there's the 5,000 square foot employment training program of ECS's chefs program, which works with people who have exited homelessness and are homeless to train in culinary arts. So, so we have been working very hard and very diligently. The other thing that this property does is pioneer factory-built housing in San Francisco, which has never really been done for affordable housing, publicly funded. So we were working very hard to figure out all the logistics of bringing factory-built housing units, which are units built off-site and then trucked to San Francisco and then craned in place. So that diagram that was showing the cranes is basically showing how the units will be craned in place from Stevenson. So we've been figuring out many, many logistics and we are, you know, very regretful and truly sorry that we had to remove the Mission Street tree without approval. That is not something, the way we typically do business in San Francisco. Mercy Housing has been developing affordable housing for approximately 30 years in San Francisco. We're a private nonprofit. We only build affordable housing, usually for very low income and vulnerable people. ECS is mandate is to house people who are experiencing homelessness. They also have only been working in San Francisco in the South Market for the last 30 years, working on housing people who have experienced homelessness. So we take very seriously our, our mission and our commitment to San Francisco and, and to the urban canopy in San Francisco. So we have been working again with Cahill, hand in hand, and all of our architects and engineers and landscape architects to try to follow all the city's policies. But I think unfortunately, this, this was something that, as Brian mentioned, we had been sort of resequencing and trying to really work with the contractors to stay on schedule, given COVID protocols. We started construction the day that the shelter in place went into effect. And irregardless of the shelter in place or COVID, we are given no relief from the federal government's mandate that we place the building in service by November 2021. There are significant fees to the project and to the city if the, if the project is not placed in service by that date. So we have, Cahill's been working hard to resequence work and look at how they can be doing work basically with construction workers spread out and working a little differently to, to basically comply completely with COVID protocols in order to keep their workforce safe. And so I think some of these changed logistics were a result of that, of their being very diligent and working with us to try to maintain our schedule. We're very excited that we're close to on schedule and we will be welcoming residents to the building in January 2022. We're very excited that this building will be a significant part of the mayor's goal to house 1,500 people who are currently experiencing homelessness in these COVID times. And the clinic will be opened by the Department of Public Health soon after, in the spring of 2022. And the chef's program will be working with people to increase their economic independence during these challenging times. So again, we're, we're very sorry. This is not typically how we do business, but we are just trying to work with the city in order to, to, to work towards this goal. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Josh with his raised hand. Hi, Josh.
Thank you. Okay, so what I'm, what I'm hearing here is we're doing this really good thing. So you should look the other way and ignore the fact that we just intentionally broke the law. And Article 16 of the San Francisco Public Works Code, Section 811, addresses penalties for illegal tree removal. And those penalties and this law does not distinguish between thousands of affordable housing units or a new strip mall. I'm particularly baffled how a project like this, with a development team with this level of experience and sophistication, went ahead and illegally removed a tree, which based on the history of this project that was just portrayed in the last presentations, this project team was not only well aware of the need of, of the need for a removal permit, but actually let it be known, they were just going to go ahead and ignore that and remove the tree regardless of Public Works' decision. This isn't just a violation of the law, it's a violation of public due process and the public due process that is built into the procedural requirements of Article 16. Construction delay is not an excuse for ignoring the law. The team, the construction team, the development team, they knew it was required. They just didn't plan for it. And then when it was going to cost them too much, they just decided it was cheaper to break the law and come onto this hearing and apologize. What I want to know is what message does that send that to other developers, regardless of their project, about the importance of following the law, but especially for a model project like this that is funded by taxpayer dollars, that is going to this good cause? What, what, what message does that send? Not only to other developers, but also to the residents of San Francisco who rely on our officials and our develop, and the, and the development teams selected by our officials to follow and enforce their own laws? Thank you.
Thank you. And John Nolte, you have your hand raised?
Yes, good evening. Yes, the, the parking lot was part of the NICE Court of Appeals and was handed to the city for $1 so that they could build on this. And, and this property also, you know, again, you know, for $1. So, so everything else was, you know, they didn't pay for the land. All the money was going for construction and for the construction cost. So for, for an experienced team like, it was mentioned, and then the experienced nonprofits that were mentioned to, to break the law, knowingly know the law, been working in the city for 30 years or more and, and, and just go ahead and do it. What kind of a message are we doing, sending to other developers? This has been going on numerous times. I think some point we have to look at why you allow them to do this. And also, I haven't heard from Steve, how much you're going to charge the developer for removing the tree? You know, what are the penalties? Because there's just three sections to that penalty phase. I think the extreme should be put here because they are, are cutting corners to meet deadlines that were decided way before the project even started. So they knew they were under the gun from the beginning and they didn't plan for it. Thank you.
Thank you. I will allow if Steve could briefly maybe address some of these comments and questions. That would be great.
Yeah, definitely. I, I agree that, with everyone that, you know, clearly the development knowingly removed the tree and knew what they were doing was illegal. In terms to properly assess the fine, it is, we, so we appraised it, I think we did a, how do you say? It's the, the basic, like you can do cost, like you can appraise the replacement value. And I think it came, I don't know the exact number. My coworker did it, but it was around eight or $9,000. That was just given, it's, what is it? It's the Guide to Landscape Appraisals 10th Edition. It's just a, a basic calculation based on size, species and other things. But I, I don't think that number really does justice in this particular instance, given the fact that they knowingly removed the tree. I would really like to know, I would like an estimate from the development in terms of how much money they think they actually saved by illegally removing the tree? Because clearly they did it to stay on schedule and, you know, avoid other maybe penalties from, that were in their development agreement. So if I can get a number from the development saying like, oh yeah, we illegally removed this tree because we think we actually saved X in terms of construction delays. I think that number would, you know, give us something fair in terms of, maybe it won't be that amount, but just to, so we have an idea of what their motivations were. And additionally, I think it would also be fair to the community to, you know, you can, what's the, you know, see what species we want to go back on that section of Mission Street and have the development find, you know, as large of a tree that can go back in that sidewalk as possible and see how much canopy we can instantly recoup. I think that's something that would be fair. And also maybe planting slightly larger trees on, on Stevenson as well. But yeah, there's, there's a basic calculation for replacement value, which we do often, but I think this is a little bit more extraordinary. Thanks.
Thank you. I see Erin's hand is raised. Erin, if you could please keep your response to like 30 seconds, that would be great.
Sorry about that. Hi, this is Erin. So yes, I will keep it to 30 seconds. I just wanted to briefly, as much as I can, re-characterize some of the, the discussion around what happened here. This was not a contractor that just sort of, you know, walked around and fell asleep and didn't know that they had to do this. you know, walked around and fell asleep and didn't know that they had to do this application. We have been working on the logistics plan since I think it's been a year now, I think November. That logistics plan has been extraordinarily complicated because of the fact that this is on Mission Street. Faces on to Mission Street, there's a very narrow bus lane that the bus can't even fit into. And so some of the logistics were focused on trying to access on Mission Street. But SFMTA stated, we'd either have to shut down two lanes and shift and also shut down this 14 bus and, and restrike daily, morning and night, or and/or do everything at nighttime. It just became like a really, really difficult thing to accomplish in that regard. That is part of the reason we got pushed up against a wall, I believe, and Brian can clarify further if that's useful. But anyway, I just wanted to make it known that this was not just people doing willy-nilly things and disregarding the law, because that's not what happened here. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sharon, if you could please, yeah, give a brief response, like 30 seconds, that would be great.
Sure. I believe that specifics regarding the cost of delay was requested. So I understood Brian estimated previously that we expected that this could put, you know, going through the formal process of removing the, of getting approval to remove the tree, could delay us up to about four to five weeks. So that would be about 150,000 in general conditions and other costs of the overall project taking that much longer. The fee to the Health and Human Services for delivering the project late is approximately 150,000 a month. We, even though we are a nonprofit, we enter into various financial agreements and we are required to place the units in service by a certain date. And if we don't, there are costs of the, essentially the investor not receiving the tax credits that they purchased. And the units being delayed in occupancy for a month would be about $200,000. And then there's construction interest, and that would be about $50,000 for one month of delay in paying down the construction loan. So all of those together would be the cost of delay.
Thank you. And Brian will allow you 30 seconds to respond or give a final comment. Or it doesn't seem like, Brian, do you want to talk or, oh, okay.
All right. It didn't give me the unmute now sign. Yes, I kind of want to reiterate the fact that we are truly sorry that it came down to this as a contractor. This is not something we do. This is something we took a lot of thought in having to do it in the fashion we did it. Like in working through all of these logistics, it, it came to pass in the last couple of, basically the last month, that we couldn't do, we couldn't build it the way we had initially planned, that we had gone through all the options using Mission Street, using the court drive aisle even next door, and all of those, all of those options were denied. The, the option for the, the most recent, and the reason why it had to come down so quickly, was because of the denial of being able to place concrete from Mission Street. And that was, that was the, the main issue of why we could not wait.
Thank you. So with that, I'm going to now close this item and we'll make my recommendations to the director. So moving on to the last item, it's for order number 203647. And this is for 2347 Third Street, 2475 Third Street and 2585 Third Street. This is to consider removal of three street trees with replacement adjacent to three different addresses in the Dog Patch neighborhood, 2347 Third Street, 2475 Third Street and 2585 Third Street. Staff approved the removals and the public has protested. I will allow Public Works to please make its presentation.
Yeah, hi, Steve Keller, Bureau of Urban Forestry. This particular, these particular trees are not associated with any permit. It's the removal, it's three trees. The Bureau of Urban Forestry pursued on removal on her, on her own, and they're in close geographic area. So they were lumped into one, one hearing. The, the reason the Bureau of Urban Forestry looked at this, these sites to begin with, was there was a trip and fall claim at 2347 Third Street. It was a ficus tree that was uplifting the sidewalk. So we were told to go look at the, the site and assess the sidewalk damage. And when we went to go look at the tree, on top of there being bad sidewalk damage, it was also a ficus tree, which many people are aware that Public Works has a specific order stating that we've lessened restrictions on ficus trees due to their, their potential to cause sidewalk damage. Their their structural characteristics that as they get larger, tend to drop very large branches into the public right of way, damaging cars and sometimes injuring people. So this was a particular tree that where we thought the structure was poor enough. And the sidewalk damage was bad enough that we would like to pursue removal. The tree had also had limb damage caused by impacted trees. Here you can see the, the tree had poor branch, branching structure at the, the main union. Included bark where there's not a lot of connective wood tissue between holding the branch in. So that is a, a point of future failures as the tree gets larger. Again, to show more poor structure of the tree, and here is the, what the sidewalk damage looked like when the, the claim was held against the city. Because this was claim related, the sidewalk repair was expedited, so the sidewalk has already been repaired. And the, the roots have been pruned down to facilitate the sidewalk repair. Here's a, a photo of the decut root. Um, yeah. The, the next tree on this, adjacent to this property is adjacent to it. The tree's in front of 2475 Third Street. It's another large or medium-sized ficus tree with poor structure. It has many crossing limbs and a disproportionate canopy distribution to one side. Port, again, just showing more photos of the, the tree's poor structure. And as it grows larger, if it doesn't receive the necessary maintenance, it poses a high risk of branch failure. And here is a photo showing that the sidewalk damage. I would say, I mean, this tree could likely tolerate the sidewalk damage. But again, given the species and its failure potential, and that the fact that Public Works is loosening its restrictions on removing ficus trees, this is a tree we wanted to remove. And then lastly, there was a tree at 2585 Third Street, a Brisbane box tree. It leans severely into the public right of way. It, it creates a pinch point in the sidewalk. The tree's been reported as obstructing the regular use and flow of traffic or pedestrian traffic. It restricts ADA access to walkways limited by the tree. Pruning cannot help correct this as the tree intact, as the tree grows larger. And, you know, and gets more weight, gravity will bring the trunk further into the path of travel. And we also believe a visually impaired person would easily walk into this tree and possibly hit their head. What else? Yeah, here's more, just more photos showing the, the restriction on the path of travel. Again, all of these trees, all of these sites are replantable. If yeah, and Public Works does plan to replace them, if they're within one of Friends of Urban Forests prioritized planting areas, we can get these trees replaced relatively quickly. I would have to look at Friends of the Urban Forests grant maps and see if it falls into the area where they're doing expedited planting. But again, yeah. I guess that is it for Urban Forestry. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. We'll now open it for public comments. And Josh has his hand raised first. Please go ahead, Josh.
Thank you. So just one question on that one ficus Steve mentioned that it seemed like, not the first one, but the second one. If there had been a consideration of how to maintain that rather than take it all out completely. Regarding the, the Brisbane box on the, with the lean, I was curious if, since this is a bureau initiated removal, if there were any plans in place to install tree protection that might prevent that from happening in the future. And Steve had mentioned he's going to check with Fuff regarding how long it would be until this would be replaced. Like, it would be great if that could be included in the decision, how long that would take to have a replacement. I, I think the, the Brisbane box is a good choice. There, there are a lot along that corridor and they seem to do pretty well. And then finally, I just, I, I know that Steve stepped in at the last minute today, and I just want to thank him and congratulate him on doing a solid job tonight.
Thank you. And if you don't have anything else, Josh, I'm going to go to John next.
Oh yeah, I'm done, sorry.
Oh, no worries. Just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Good evening. First, the, I agree with that the second Brisbane box should be looked at more closely to see if it could be retained. And also the first one, because they had already done the concrete and now there's an issue with the roots. I would assume the roots should be done first before they do the concrete. I mean, you know, I'm not, you know, the, the, how the, the bureau handles that the removal, but they never talk about that. So, you know, it comes to be a gray area for the public to understand what comes first. And lastly, the Brisbane box, we have literally a large amount of Brisbane boxes throughout the city. And this is not the first time that I've seen a Brisbane box being taken out because of the lean. And who plants the Brisbane box? The city does. And so, and, and so when they plant them, they, they don't come and still consider maintaining them after they plant them, so they don't lean. I think that's, that's wrong here, afterthought, because the tree leans because of the wind or whatever. And so they go at an angle, and so you end up, when you put in, say 100, you end up taking out 20 of them some many years later. So it's sort of a city of coming back to a tree that they put in and then taking it out later because they didn't take care of it. And so it is sort of the fault of the city. So thank you.
Thank you. Steve, I will allow you to give a brief response if you want to address.
Yeah, first I'll talk about the first ficus tree where the sidewalk repair has already been made. In an ideal setting, when a tree is proposed for removal because of, we think the roots will be severely impacted by sidewalk damage, generally we hold off on repairing the sidewalk until the tree is officially approved for removal. And I believe in this particular instance, when a, a, a site is involved in a trip and fall claim, it's my understanding that it does not get routed to the Bureau of Urban Forestry for a, I mean, sometimes I do, but there's another program called ASAP, which is part of the Bureau of Street Use and Mapping, and they have a close relationship with claims where claims tells the Bureau of Street Use and Mapping where a claim happened and they jump on repairing that sidewalk. So that's why that, that sidewalk site was repaired ahead of tree removal ultimately being approved. And then in terms of preserving the other ficus, I, you know, I don't know, we can look into, you know, take a closer look at what type of pruning could be done to preserve it. Again, it just, one thing is, it really comes down to the fact that we're ultimately trying to get rid of ficus trees. And, you know, the more we leave, the more likely we're going to have more failures down the road. So if we can get this tree replaced with a more acceptable species, I think we'd probably be better off in 10 years rather than doing a lot of maintenance now, but still having a, a maintenance issue down the line. And in terms of the leaning Brisbane box, you know, obviously we try our best to, to ensure young trees get established well. But, you know, I think most people here listening understand that establishing young trees can be difficult and sometimes they don't establish perfectly. You know, we, when we see a young tree that has staking issues, we try to jump on it because we know the, the early investment on young tree care pays dividends in terms of Latin, in terms of it not needing maintenance in the future. You know, that's, it's, it's an investment in what we do, you know, young tree care is the, the easiest way to get a return on investment. My guess is on this tree is at some point in time, it was likely hit by a car when it was young and didn't fully uproot. Or it was, it maybe blew over when it was young or maybe past the, it was, the lean started past the point where it could actually be restaked and it's just been left to grow. But at this point, it's time to take it out. And Brisbane box is one of our most highly planted species. It grows fast, it gets large, and it can be a tall tree and narrow sidewalk. So it's something we're going to keep planting despite the fact that some of them, you know, don't, they, they don't establish as, I guess they, you know, they're not as structurally sound when they're young and can develop these issues. The, the benefits of planting them still outweighs the, the fact that young tree care could be a little difficult when it comes to developing young leens. Thanks.
Thank you. If there are no more comments for this item, I will now close the item and make my recommendations to the director. So I want to give this, now that we've gone through all the items for tonight's agenda and hearing, I'm going to ask if there are any public comments on any of the items on the agenda. If you have spoken, you will not be allowed to speak again. This is for those who might have come late or who didn't have a chance to speak. And I'm going to give a few seconds, but thank you. And if there are no more public comments, I will be officially closing this hearing. And the hearing is now, oh, no. I thought I heard something. No?
I was just going to say goodnight.
Okay, okay. The hearing is now closed. Thank you.